So the time's six oh one and I call the December tenth order selection. For your please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the.
Thirty seconds behind. Second. No citizens.
So approval of the minutes for November twenty sixth.
Motion approved. I was not here. I abstained.
Okay, so I'll second that. So all in favor. And you said I and you said everything. Okay, so they're passed. additions to the agenda. I just want to add under local traffic authority, I have a fine request. And under new business after recognition, I have adequate.
Motion to update the agenda as she just stated. So.
Second, any discussion on that?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so they're added. We'll go on to court final announcement. Um, I received a letter today or email today from DEP regarding the DEP trail. For purchase or I mean the. Handle work. Um, just a note to say that on December seventeenth, this proposal will be posted online at the CEQ. Environmental Monitor webpage for thirty day public comment period. I'll touch base again after the thirty days are over. I'll let you know if we got any comments and if not, the next steps for execution of a quick claim be by the EDP while town. So that's where that is.
We good.
I also, um, the library. And. The rep commission are working together to apply for. The Valentine small and rural communities grant application. They are. I think it is to. Do a. Walking trail or a handicapped accessible.
Story trail.
Story trail, yeah. For inclusive and inclusive play. Next to the, um. New playground. So the grants to fund that. So I sent in, I wrote a letter to support for that.
Thank you.
Nice. And that's all I have. Well. I've gotten two emails already today from, um, emergency management about the storm that's coming through tomorrow. So. We're anticipating high winds.
Sixty five, sixty five miles.
Yeah, and lots of rain up to five inches, so.
There's gonna be lots of trees coming down.
Yeah, and it's supposed to start like being the worst like around three P M. So it's.
I go to Walmart and get your shopping. Milk and bread, red milk, patties. I expect schools will have early dismissal.
Well, I know they're supposed to have their Christmas concert tomorrow and everything. No, well.
It may be candlelight. They have a generator.
So on to public works report. Um, and with your stuff is the snowplow policy that I worked with, um, public works to update. So the main updates are, um. The since last year was our first time using straight salt, we just updated a little bit this year regarding the, um, the salt ratios and. They changed up their roots a little bit. So the flowers are a little different. We just added more, um, information in there on expectations for the residents as far as, um, when they're, um. Flowering, when they're flowering or shoveling their driveways. Uh, edge markers and snow stays if they place them. Um, on the road by their property, it still within the town right away and, um, snow can still get piled there. Uh, just some expectations on sidewalks and just reminding more emphasis on residents. Removing vehicles and we added trash cans. Um, keeping trash cans out of the sidewalk and out of the roadway. So there's just more in detail on that, on those areas. And that's where it's been up to here.
So nothing too drastic.
Nothing drastic. We just need to, um. Approve the update.
Move to approve the updates. Second, approving the updates.
So motions been made and second is to approve. The updates to the, um. Now and ice control policies. Is there any more discussion on that or any questions? Earlier in the month.
It's definitely well afraid of the storm.
Okay, so on favor of approving the changes to the snow house control policy, um, so I.
Aye.
Um, local traffic authority. So I have two things for the local traffic authority. Um, we'll start with the school zone fines. They are up and running and programmed and. The program that goes with them is cloudy and.
You are the expert.
It's really cool. I know it took me a while to figure it out. Um, I was working with the, the company is actually based in Quebec. And I found out that they have, they can get in and control the signs from Quebec, which is kind of scary, but.
They can do that in Toronto, too.
So. There, there's, there happened to be a problem with their server, which is why I wasn't getting the information to. Like all the directions to update the sign. So I actually figured out how to do it. Without their directions and just talking to the guy with places I had problems because afterwards he's like, oh yeah, we just figured out why you didn't get anything because the server stuck and you had to like. Click yes that you did the online training and then after you click yes, all there, you're supposed to get all this stuff. But whenever I clicked yes, it, it just didn't get anywhere. So he got, and I noticed it wasn't going through, but. Just kept clicking it every day when I went in. He's like, I'm using the, um, training for like to help me do the sign. He's like, yeah, we just got like twenty guesses, but you finished the program because the server just finally like accepted it. So, um, it's really cool. Um, I can see it tracks. It, the sign only flashes and, and activates that its recordings is that it's. Acknowledging people's speed during the school class, three times a day during select times. But it's active, but it is tracking the speed all the time.
So that's a good source of data that we can use in going to the state on speed bumps.
Yeah, it tracks, it tracks the speed all the time and, and it's like counting the cars too. So.
Well, what's gonna be interesting is, um, I don't know, I don't know if you heard, but, um. Rhode Island Supreme Court, yeah. Just ruled that the truck tolls are legal. So they are coming back.
Yeah.
So we will probably see an uptick in truck trafficking. So we're getting this just in time to.
See if our numbers.
Start collecting data, yeah.
Now, in the hours when the, um, speed limit is not posted. I always assume we're doing the non-school hours and in those hours. For the speed when it's not posted, that's without white pulsating light is?
It's the pulsating light is the, is it tracking the time?
Okay.
Tracking the speed.
It's tracking the speeds, but it's not telling.
It's not telling people what their speeds are because that's only activated to work during the school zone time. So.
There are reasons why I doubt it.
Uh, I don't know if I can separate them. I had to program them. Separately, so I might be able to, but the thing is too. They're solar powered, so. And there, there's batteries in there too. So the more if it's working twenty four seven, it's gonna take more of the battery energy. It's gonna take more energy. So it might.
So the solar might not be able to keep up, which is keeping the battery charged.
Yeah, so that's why. It's only on for those times because I can see where the energy, I can see the energy draining like. I have an access to see the reports on the, on the battery time too. It's like, I don't know how it's gonna work. On days where it like it was cloudy today and so I don't know how. How it's gonna work that way. So having them, uh, having it on all the time might just end up costing more money because I only have like a, I think they only sent. A backup battery for each sign, so.
And these batteries are proprietary type of battery?
I'm sure they are by design.
So it's true to the whole battery.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's probably more than that.
They came, the package I got included a couple of backup batteries and. Um, the cost of the, um, online portal for seven years. And I can't even imagine setting these signs up without it being online because if I had to actually go and stand next to every sign to program it, I probably would have lost my mind. And Julie's too.
So. So it's not just the speed gun, you know, enough of the batteries. It's also. There, there's a built in cellular receiver, so. So that they can be programmed.
Yeah. So. But it's a good idea to have them on all the time, but it, um, I don't know if it'll. Unless we get like electric, electricity out there, which is a whole other problem. So. Then I actually received a letter which is in your.
Leading, leading to the second item here where if we have to run electricity to that one, that would be even more.
Yeah, there's a letter in your packet that I received from a resident who happens to have one of the signs in there in front of her house. Um, the sign is in the town.
Same reason that we've been complaining about the site work for the sidewalks.
Uh, yeah, I believe it might be. With the letters in your, in your packet, um. These are requesting, not funny. These requesting that we, um.
Move the sign.
The ultimate decision of this is the state as the local traffic authority, we can, um. I have another sign request here. That's also one of the state roads. If it's a town road, depending on what kind of sign is it, sign it is, we can decide whether or not a sign. Goes there, stays there, moves, just depend on if it was fine on town road. Um, on state roads, we don't really have anything to do with it. Um, we can decide if. We want to move it forward and because I have to actually submit a, a letter in writing. And fill out forms. To, um, have them change anything. So if we want to, you can see the letter.
So two things. First, um, the letter itself, um, this is not the typical. I have a problem, do something. It is, I have a problem with, um, meaningful suggestions. It is, uh. So it is a well-written letter, uh, and I want to make sure we receive it in that regard. Second, um. How is it decided where it went? Did the state say it goes here, X marks the spot or?
I didn't, I might have grabbed that. I can go, I can go show you. If you give me one second, I can go grab it.
No, no, you're fine. You're proven with us.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I, I was just curious. So the location was chosen by the state, not by us.
Actually sent me like a map. Of the whole road and like, like every single sign that's out there. Has a location where it's supposed to be based on like X number of feet from.
Some reference point.
Some reference point. So everything is had to go where the state said to put it because they, they engineered where every sign goes. Um, there was a sign already in the spot where not exactly the same spot, but in the near area. Where the sign was put in, it was supposed to take one out, replace it, but because of the, of the size of the sign, it couldn't go as close to the road as where the other sign was.
Otherwise trucks would be.
So, um, we actually knew that that was gonna be an issue. So public work had reached out to DOT and was like, can someone actually. From the DOT because we've never worked with signs of this size before, um, we just used the single pole signs and this is a like some bent based sign. They actually had someone from the DOT come and show them like the proper number of feet from the street that a sign has of this size had to be for safety reasons and all that and. They were shown and told where to put it. So which it is, it, it looks like it's really, it's no matter where the sign goes on that road, it's gonna be close to someone's house because all the houses are close to the road, all of that. I mean. It's, it's gonna be close to someone's house. Um.
Well, it looks like one of the suggestions they have is, um, the property line between two driveways. So. That's it.
That becomes obstruction now.
Well, I am, I'm gonna recommend that we do, um, submit this forward to the state, um, whether or not they, the state decides to actually move the location of the sign, it's still really. It's, it's hard to see from where it is because there is another sign blocking it. Um, they have a, um, they have a big yellow sign that you really can't see this sign until you're like almost on it. Um, because one of the other state signs is blocking it. So, um.
So something has to move no matter what.
So I would, um, recommend, um. I can submit a request to the state to re- set to like look at where these signs are and to. Whatever they decide works to do that. Um, public works was just a little worried about this because it's. It's an expensive sign to install and remove because it's in a con- concrete base. So, um, it, it's gonna. Cost to get it out and put it back in. So that's what they were concerned about.
And they're gonna have to have a backhoe out there. And we will have to have.
I don't know how they're gonna get the sign. And I don't know how they got it in either. They didn't have to stop traffic to get it in, so.
Right. But to get out the concrete that they pour because it's probably bolts coming up out of concrete and sits down on it. And it's just bolted down so they can easily get the sign out, but then the concrete block.
Yeah.
That's what they're gonna need the backhoe for.
So.
We put a memorial plaque on it. On the spot in seventeen eighty-three, nothing happened.
So I would, I would recommend.
Washington slept here. What do you think?
At least submitting in a request for the state to like a replacement of the sign and the signs around it from visibility factor too.
Yeah.
Good.
Send them off to the great talk of all the laws.
Make a motion to.
So moved. Second, let's move that sign.
So motion been made and seconded to forward the, um, request of the resident to, um, the DOT. Um, with, uh, the alternate options for the sign and, um. To look at the other placements of the other signs blocking the view. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Um, and you're no doubt will send a letter to the correspondent.
All with the resident, okay.
It wasn't our choice.
Right. Oh, yeah.
We were sure what we were.
You know, but. Um, okay, so we'll do that. That was all in favor. And then, um, today I got a request.
Let's see.
I actually forgot I had a slide, like a slide request portal on my public works website. So kudos to this person for.
I think, and usually yes.
Except that's all. How did I do this? It's been a while, you know? Um, so. This is a request to, um, add a new sign and it's on three. Around three sixty Pendleton Hill Road. This is a state road also. Um, it would be a bus stop ahead sign. All right. And it would be a new sign around, I said, six thirty Pendleton Hill Road, but the sign needs to be placed before the corner around six twenty Pendleton Hill Road. I'm gonna have to ask her. I don't know if she's been here which directions, which side of the road we're at here.
Is that the. Is it on Pendleton Hill by the farm, uh, where the S turns?
Maybe.
Okay.
I'm gonna look it up. I don't know. It says a month ago at six fifteen in the morning, a truck completely went through the bus stop sign. I'm able to stop in time and nearly miss the kids boarding the bus.
So six twenty eight is. Right by Gallup Road. How is that?
I don't know if that's originally, is it originally?
Oh, Rachel, let's watch all the down.
Exactly. Um. Then on twelve ten at six fifteen A M. As the kids were crossing the street to board the bus, a van coming towards the bus failed to see the stop sign out. On the side of the bus and stopped within fifteen feet of hitting the kids who were in the road. The one had to move out of the way to avoid being hit and a sign might be a small warning to people who are speeding to slow down certain times of the day. So I'll submit, I'm gonna reach out to her, um, the resident and see. Which directions and what side of the road and where, because we probably put signs on, I would think on both sides of the road. But I don't know which direction this one is talking about, so. But, um. This has to go through the state for a request too, so I'm, I'm fine with going there.
Was it six coin penalty road?
Yeah. Six thirty Pendleton Hill where the bus stopped. She's supposed to put the sign around six twenty.
The straightaway six twenty is, so it's, um, the lumber mill right across from the farm.
That's a straight line of sight. I mean, you can't see a crazy yellow bus with a red sign.
No, it's, it's right at the end.
What is the sign supposed to do?
So forty nine south. Where it's right at the end of the farm. So where you've got the curve and the downhill. So you're forty nine south with the farm to your, right at the end of the farm. There's a curve and a downhill. So that's gotta be it right there because it looks, it's a couple of houses up from that bend here.
Probably by a gen's old, huh?
Yeah, it's like it's three houses down from Sean's house.
Okay.
It's six twenty.
All right.
So, yeah.
So we're fine with that. If there's a motion, I. I'll, uh, reach out to the, um.
Motion to add another sign.
Yeah.
School bus ahead, school bus stop ahead, yeah.
Walmart.
Does the, since it's a state road, does the state have to install it?
They install those. We just, the only one, they just made me install this one because. I don't know why.
They didn't want to.
Because, yeah.
Because it wasn't a simple, single post.
Only time we've ever had to install sign on state roads. They have always done it. So I don't know why.
They knew it was gonna be a problem.
Yeah. Probably. I think because they turned all the electric signs over to the towns and because it's like solar and not electric, maybe we fell into the same thing, um.
Okay.
But did I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll email her, um, the resident harm, get more information and then send off two letters to.
We want to find out in which direction the bus.
Yeah, the direction, like what, what direction the cars were coming from when she had a problem and. Which side of the road she's talking about from the sign.
Well, I think they would, they would have to go in. Forty nine south. Because you have that long straightaway.
Right, and. And. School bus drivers also have to, school bus drivers also have to plan their route so that they're picking up kids on the same side of the road. They only have, they only cross the road. There, there's no other way to do the route without.
Right, there's no house on, on the side of that way.
Right, so it would be headed for you, the bus would be headed for you that's out. Yeah.
Still, from that point, I don't see how you couldn't be, you'd see a yellow bus with flashers on. What is this sign? I mean. Do it, but.
Yes, and I start at least sixteen more and finish. All right.
Find out if there's any child that might have life, life problems with the sign.
All right, so that's traffic authority. Um, fine answer for it.
You just got it.
It's only also.
That's the P and L, it's a fix incentive report. Um. Audit to be completed by January, so they'll probably have a, um. Presentation for you guys at one of your meetings in January. That's fun presentation. That's fun, yeah. The other sign from as of now is, uh, one million three eighty-two, oh three, oh three six. Thirteen percent of the general fund. Some of that is used for the capital project fund, so it's less tax, less than that. We did not have to do a federal single audit this year, so. We were under the seven hundred, just barely, like by four thousand dollars under seven hundred fifty. About that was a federal grant. Next year, we'll definitely have to do a federal single audit, much more extensive.
Hmm.
Um, projects we're working on here though. We, Tracy and I met with Clearville for the first time on the November twenty fifth. Um, I sent them all the four years of data so far we have, um, met with them today. They're working on starting them out in the build up. Accounts and everything.
Send a check to.
We sent them the check too. Yes, we got their invites already. Uh, we were, we were talking to the board of ed to, we might ask, um, if they're interested in seeing a presentation on it. What the Clearville will look like. So that they know what's gonna be out there and if, if they wanted to be, uh, participate in it.
Right.
Um, Centralville, we, um, met with Centralville today. We, um, gave them the line to open their new account, so starting to transition all the site accounts to Centralville. So they probably at least six months. Um. And then key cards, we're moving because we're at Citizens right now. Our credit cards are with Citizens. So we're gonna close the credit cards and move to the state. It's called key cards. So any transactions on your credit card, it works kind of like a rewards type of thing. So at the end of the year, you will get some kind of small amount, but. We don't put a lot in credit cards, but we will get a little reimbursement or something for. Based on whatever. I don't really know the specifics yet, but. We're looking at to move those. And then the last, um, Tracy's panel, we're heading out. Um, the minute system we have now, a different board manager trying to decide what makes sense, whether we're keeping or not keeping or switching to something else, so. There's still a lot of profit, so. Thank you about that. That's what we've been working on. And Craig?
No.
Yeah, I don't think I have the treasures. There is. Nothing else.
Not the last page.
I stayed in my pocket.
Oh. Second page.
It's yours.
No.
You get your one thought with the money?
Oh, no, no, I think it might have been actually in the previous ones. I saw Tony's. Was going somewhere. There it is.
I didn't have everything.
Yeah. Roger that. Okay, that was less.
I didn't have everything stand, so it's not there or you got it?
Yes.
Okay.
It was in the minutes package, the second package.
Already? So the treasurer submitted a report. Did you read it?
I did.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, every dollar?
Sure.
You know, and some of the things that I do. Yep, investments and interest earned for November eleven thousand eighty dollars from your specifically year to date, uh, seventy three thousand five hundred and seventy two dollars. Um, Citizen Bank. Hello. How are you? Good. Um. Good, can I get short term investment fund? Also, Citizen Bank account, there's a update on that, an update on the state, can I hit short term investment fund? Um, and the Federal Open Market Committee will meet twelve seventeen, twelve eighteen. For a point two five percent reduction to be approved. Projects, working on a banking provider. Just hold on. No, no, that's maybe, maybe we selected it for, oh, yeah, with the last meeting, so they're transitioning.
Yep.
And working on an investment policy. Yeah, that's the new one. All right, so. Alright, so. Old business. I don't really have any updates on anything, we're still. We have meetings tomorrow with everyone, so I should have updates that I have. New business. Resignation.
Several thank you cards.
I did, I already thanked him a lot. Um so we have a resignation from um Albinder. With the Economic Development Commission. Um Brian Luciano is um. Resigning from the Economic Development Commission, the elderly commission. Um Wetland Commission and. Yeah, yeah. So um I accepted um. That I received the whole thing there, all of, hopefully there and all of Brian's resignations with regret. And um thank them for um their time volunteering for the family commission.
With regrets.
Yeah, with regrets. So I think we're just moving forward to accept the resignation.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to uh accept Albinder and Brian Luciano's um resignations with regret. Um all in favor? Opposed hearing none, um their resignation part, um accepted. Uh so now I have some appointments. I have um Chris Shabbat, he's currently an alternate for the wetland positions. But he would like to um step up to be the full member, um replacing um taking Brian's lead.
Was Ryan a full member or an alternate?
He was a full member.
Okay, maybe I haven't been given a previous term, and then he was offered something. Yeah.
And. Um then I have. Shawna Sepanski would like to be on the. Was she in the time? Yeah, zoning board appeal. Where she would take this way, going for it. I just need um motions and.
So moved.
Then second.
The motion's been made and seconded to appoint um Chris Shabbat to uh in my wetlands and Shawna Sepanski too.
CDA.
CDA, is there any discretion?
With thanks.
Yeah, with thanks. Um no discretion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed hearing none, um double complaints. Alright, alright, employee handbook. Have you got that chance to read that yet?
I regret now.
I thought I, yeah, I did read it.
Was emailed? Really?
So, we sent it to the attorney. So we sent it to the attorney, I didn't know if you guys had any questions or anything on it. Um it sent to the attorney, he made some like. Editing changes and he also had some questions about something. So we're still working on him with it, but if you guys had any questions or comments, we could.
I read it before, I remember reading it before the labor's rev and I did have questions.
So we'll have it ready to vote on for the next meeting, hopefully.
I will be prepared.
It's all right.
Alright.
Log on to my email.
The cash handling policy, we don't have yet, so we'll set that as the next one.
Low number.
One.
One. Number.
One tax refund, uh to J O A for seven hundred, seven dollars and forty three cents. As recommended by the tax law.
Motion to accept recommendation of tax law to tuition tax refund. So moved.
Do we already send a check out? That's not a check to the state.
We signed it today, but we didn't sign it.
Good attention to detail though.
Alright, so all in favor of, of except approving the tax refund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed hearing none, that's approved. Alright, I think that's.
What is our? Meeting schedule for the rest of the center, I try to make sure.
No, I think next meeting would have been on the swing four.
Okay. Gotcha, so our next meeting is. January seventh.
Officially, yes.
Yeah, honestly, one before then, but I think we will.
Okay. Make it fourteen. Gotcha, yeah, that's how it is the first. Okay, so fourteen. Already that.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Holidays. Merry Christmas.